And we've got the fire department, so let me ask Carmen to direct us to that page number and then we can get Michael gone along.
Okay, fire department, the detail for fire is on page twenty-six. As in, the fire department is still part of the general fund, this is the ten twelve department. And I think once we get rid of the ten twelve detail, Mike would probably give us information on the fire treatment tax activity. Is that okay with you, Mike?
So, the direct revenue that we have for fire department is the agreements that you annual with the rural fire district. And we have estimated that that will bring in approximately a hundred thousand dollars revenue. And that would cover a total projected budget of a hundred, of two hundred and sixty-one. So, the true general fund contribution would be the one sixty-one. Remember that there are waiters, is a paid call, a training. So, he has, Mike always has a very good estimate, but he does not know the exact number of fire calls or accidents anywhere afterwards. So, that's a big variable. As you have seen in our second column, you know, the estimated budget for this year is a hundred and twenty-six thousand. So, where are the estimated budget for next year is a hundred and fifty-one? There's just some variables in here we cannot control. Mike? Mike?
Yeah, this, this year salaries, it is going to be a little bit. But like she said, I never know from year to year. I do come pretty close, but I just never know. It was going to depend on what the rest of the year holds out for next three months. Everything else in the budget is pretty much the same. Structure system and grounds got to be at least from thirty-five hundred to zero. Currently, I'm going to use my horse and sales tax fund to actually cover repairs. As you all know, I've actually added on twice, did some repairs on the outside, kept the building up. And have approximately fifty-five thousand dollars going out next year for roof repair. So, I'm keeping the building up with my sales tax fund, is what's actually happening. And I'm cost sharing the roof with the U.D. Other than that, like Carmen said, my revenues is, it's going to be, I think it's right at a hundred thousand right now from rural fire district. Next year, I've already got the assessment from the rule, it is, so it's going to be higher next year. And I've seen a steady growth in increase in rural fire district funding. And I'm going to concede that as we see the fees coming in. And that's sixty percent of the money. And the forty percent, you have to remember, all that money from the rural fire district, that other forty they have, comes back to the fire department too at some point in time for equipment. So, you get it all, you get all the rural money at some point. Other than that, on the general fund, it is, it is what it is. The, my sales tax fund?
That's on page forty-two.
Right. My sales tax fund, guess, kind of a really good guess, with looking at revenues coming in on it. Or I think we're pretty much now on line to hit that three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And we raised it just a little bit for next year, seeing a small increase per year. So, revenues are there. My expenses this time, I do have like a five, a six, a seven year plan. But this particular year coming up, I actually kind of backed off on, I'm still there, but I backed off on what is in the fund, in the budget right now, not knowing what the economy is going to do, because I have to operate. So, and as I've talked to Carmen over time, if I need it, I have the monies there. Because all I have to do is a transfer sometime fifty-year on a project that might collapse.
In, in the fire improvement tax, Mike, we have financed two vehicles. And we're about midway through the financing, I think they're five and seven year or?
Five and, no, there's ten and ten.
Ten and ten, so we're not midway through that financing of two large pieces in between.
You know, my goal for year, I keep two years of debt on financing. And Carmen says to have the, my goal, I put that money back. I have two years out, so if something should happen, I'm looking to pay those trucks out. And it's a twenty-year sunset, but still, I'm looking to cover.
Were you also asked to, so we do get, the general fund, we do add to the fire department, correct?
Yes.
Is it less this year than it was last year?
The, the budget?
No, yeah, did you make any cuts?
I just made just a few, just a few dollars. The actual bottom line is, is going to be a little less than what my estimated year-end is. It's a little more than last year's or this year's projected, so, and this year I'm like, it's, I'm pretty much leaning down. I'm not too far. I, I look at equipment honestly, yeah, it's, it's lower, you can see on equipment purchases. I've normally run somewhere around fif, really fifteen thousand is what I cut it back to. This year's twelve, and next year's at seventy-five hundred. It's kind of shifted some of that money over to my horse and sales tax and paying some of that equipment purchase out of there. There is actually a, in, in my, in my fire, when I did that fire tax, there's actually an ordinance that states that you cannot reduce my general fund budget any more than any other department. Any, any more percentage than any other department. So, we're staying within that, okay? Hopefully, at some point, we'll be able to do more here, but I'm willing to give to make things happen.
I just know everybody else is too.
Yeah, I'm willing to, to work it out, and then the employees is the main thing, I have to have, I have to have staff. So, that's what, as you can see, like every other department, staff is more expensive.
Okay, now, the next department in general fund is the street department. And there's, and that's ten thirteen on page twenty-seven. So, as I believe has been commented before, when we started this process, we would like to get five hundred thousand. Well, we had a good process of elimination, and we have left a hundred and fifty in the street improvement contract. And then the street maintenance material is, we're using the inflation factor, and we increased that by a few thousand dollars over the year. As you look at the total on the bottom of the, of your sheet, we, we have trimmed the fat in some of this, and I would like for Tad to go into the details and the other items that were adjusted.
All right, if you guys look at ten thirteen, two sixty, that's equipment maintenance, we did bump it up quite a bit. Our mini escalator is, the tracks, and also, the thumb on it is worn out, the tracks are shot. That is going to be a considerable amount of money. Tracks alone was like five grand, the thumb was around twenty-five hundred. That's with us installing everything in-house. Two eighteen, a hundred and fifty thousand, that's pretty much explanatory. Ten thirteen, two twenty-six, the gas and oil, that's the gas fuel, just prices went up, so it's pretty well self-explanatory.
That's about what we're doing up in every department, that percentage of ones.
Then the ten thirteen, two thirty-five, the street maintenance material, all the pipe we need to install, the hauling of the salt, the cold patch, everything is just skyrocketing through, the roof, the fuel and reflation. Capital projects, I did have sixty-five thousand in there, but I took fifty out. I took the brine maker and the holding tanks, tanks for the brine maker out. Fifteen thousand is left in there for a new lawnmower for work release. And then I put five thousand in the sidewalk program. Ten thirteen, two seventy-five dash six, and everything else is pretty much not the same.
Could we take money from our street tax money? It is best to keep this general fund money over here and the street tax money in another. Okay, so then can I take this five thousand out and just use five thousand out of this twenty thousand?
Well, this five thousand would allow him to do a smaller project, a smaller thing. See, and we're very fortunate that when the transportation tax renewed, it doesn't have to be for complete street rebuild. We could do more, it gives us more options in the bill and overlay and other ways to extend our street livelihood.
It does help us offset that. One of the reasons we wanted to keep a hundred and fifty thousand, or like we kept two hundred and fifty thousand in there, is so that we're not accused of switching money around, of using the money that we got to tax to complete street rebuilds to go into general fund, to pay for other things. So, this is about the same amount of money that we've been keeping in there every year. So, we're doing about what we can before.
Are you talking about your brine, is that salt brine or the juice that they talk about?
It's still going to be straight salt brine.
This is the, streets always gets a bit hard. I haven't ever been, I mean, since I've been on council, it's either a zero or a four, this, I haven't been through. It was always getting for the bus, always under the bus?
I think Tad's got some plans for streets, so that we can improve a lot more streets than what they've been doing. And I think that, you know, when we bring that to the public work, or public works committees, that's a possibility. That's an easy one.
Because we ended up, what, two fifty last year, but that's what we had in the ten eleven.
So, how's two hundred and fifty thousand, that's an issue?
We'll bring a map back to the public works committee back here at the council. We would like to get that a hundred and fifty up if we possibly could, but there was so much strain on that, we didn't. However, the street maintenance material is up some, and that is what helps us put the material out there. So, that they balance each other off a little bit.
Can I ask what hurt the lurks that you had to cut to get into this budget?
I'd probably say the brine maker, we've got to cut it back on the water, hair and tail on the vehicle arm, equipment. Brine maker, it's all it is, is a concentrate of water and salt. Where we get an inch or two inch snow, we can just come in and we can burn it off. The emergency can simply be gone instead of plowing everything. Just the wear and tear, the plows take a beating, the guys take a beating, the trucks take a beating, it's just.
Streets take a beating.
The streets take a beating, that's correct.
So, how much is that burning?
It's around fifty thousand. Not quite fifty thousand, I was counting, I had a holding tank in there just to hold it, that way we could keep pumping. As the storm was going, we could just keep pumping into our trucks and.
What's the life expectancy of that tank?
It's probably can last a long time.
So, when you have an hour, is what you want?
If we don't have one.
See, I'm longer than by the time you pay some of the labor, all the expenses. What's the true cost of having it versus not having it?
Right, I mean, it could be that it's actually a better swap, you do a hundred dollar street and fifty dollar brine maker. I don't know the answer, but I think it's a reasonable question, because if you play in the long game, which we should, it makes, it might make sense to move that around. I don't know, what's your opinion?
In the long, I mean, just going to save on equipment, overtime for one thing, you know? Two guys can clear the emergency routes instead of having five or six of us in there. You know, you're talking, that's quite a bit of overtime over a period of time, you know? So, that'd be something we could look into, definitely.
What's the cost of it running?
It's around forty grand.
So, you could move forty grand. That's, I mean.
But then you, you'd have the whole thing taken.
Then you can make a, a real decision versus, okay, we're, it's not just a forty thousand cost, because it saves eighty. Because, and that's an easier way to make a decision.
We got, just the, just the cutting bits on the plows are like eight hundred dollars a piece. And if we, if it's a mile here, we'll go through two of them per truck. If you just burn it off there, you won't even have to put the plow down.
Okay, when you say burn off, I can kind of get a picture of it, but how long does it stay burn off?
It'll, like, if you get an inch or two inch snow, you just come in there and it'll be gone as soon as we go through.
So, then the water, then the water. Then it'll evaporate quick.
But there's a point there where if it's too cold, it won't work. There's a happy medium in there. So, if you get down around twenty degrees, below twenty degrees, it's not going to work.
But this is kind of what we got to do with our patch, it's a full patch that passes long, it works out there, and it rains long on. So, I'm like you, I think it makes sense to do an analysis.
Overtime adds up pretty quick.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, I would, personally, I'd like to see an analysis of how soon do you estimate? And you got to estimate the snows and overtime and all that, how long would it take us to break even?
Right.
I could put some numbers, get rid of your factors on that.
And you got to use that, can, first you get that over five years, ten years, not a long blast. What do you think the life of it is?
Life of what is?
Of the? Brine tank? The brine tank, if you want a big tent, can you?
A little bit, it'll last a long time. And it's set up to, there's a, there's a perfect mixture in there. If you get too much salt, it'll settle to the bottom. So, the brine maker actually, it's like twenty-one percent salt and the rest water. So, there's a, it has to be perfect, if not, then all of the salt will settle to the bottom of the tank. So, it'll, it'll last a long time.
So, we may spend, we'd make it twenty years after it.
Probably.
And twenty years overtime, working there, but it's probably worth at least a couple of years.
On, well, see, on an average, we spend around, well, this last winter was pretty mild. On an average, we spend about twelve thousand dollars a year on overtime. And I would say eighty-five percent of that is storms.
Snowstorms.
Snowstorms.
So, you think we could cut how much, eighty-five percent off or fifty percent off?
Twenty, I mean, it's not, it's not that big a percentage of what you do for, unless you pre-treat them.
Right, pre-treat, that's always a gamble, you know? They say it's going to snow, and then you pre-treat, and then nothing happens. I've seen that before, but.
You probably call it the number of, how many passes that would save you?
Right.
Or a percentage of, on an average year?
Right, yeah.
An educated guess, I would have to weigh.
An average, how much we would save by using the brine maker?
Just, yeah, what, cost versus savings over five years or over whatever? You break it down per year.
I'd say we'd probably save sixty thousand dollars a year, or not a year, but in five years. If I have a brine maker with overtime and, and, well, yeah, probably more than that, just thinking that. There's fuel costs in there, yeah, probably closer to seventy-five or eighty.
In five years, seven.
Is this something you'd give more of that year?
Well, I was planning on giving one, this was a secret, I took it out.
So, you think all part of three years, we get break even?
Oh, yeah, I'd say so.
The next seven weeks for?
Yeah.
It seems like we need to figure out a good one. So, you want to go, well, talk to the book first?
Well, yeah, what I would ask you all to do is just make a list of all of these, and then once we get through all of them, when we come back and you can see where you want to be, some of the things may depend on the other things. And we don't have to make a decision tonight. We get through it all, you give your notes, and then we, next week when we get together, that's when we'll have a discussion, ask for decisions, so we can go ahead and we can get a good order. Take your notes, go look, listen, I've got, I've got three stars by this.
Appreciate your mention. And if there's something that's on the line, then.
So, another arm of the street or of MAB's current responsibilities is the airport. Airport is considered a governmental fund. So, it's, it's, in the big picture, it's added in to the general fund, governmental fund. And it's on page four, four, on page four, is the airport. Your links are put together in the narrative front order, so.
But Tad and Public Works does manage that, even though it's not actually one of the items listed in the fund, they can see. We ask you to talk about it now since we're done.
The second column, the current year budgets was two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Our expected budget for this next year is two hundred and twelve, twenty-five. The airport is one that has limited revenue sources. We have the hangers that we ran out, there's the fuel program that Eric manages, that the aircraft fuel that he sells through the tanks and everything. But also, this fund is, has a large contribution from other funds, because we're able to use the airport as a promotion to, in order, we have needed good airport in order to bring business expansion, people in the camera. I don't go out to the airport, I don't see how many planes go in and out every day, you know, partly because we wanted to improve the airport in a way on a regular basis. So, that's all I have for the airport, Eric can.
I'd say, in general, the budget numbers that we have for airport, put those. I rarely go over budget, because I do, normally it's a fine budget, I have like a brand new lawnmower. We got some, some lights, just goes back, we take the lights off to get to runway. We spent, we've got a lot going on the last two years, we're going to be good for ten years or three or four, you know, runway. So, I don't see, and we talked to other people about taking five thousand on as fresh as systems and grounds, which I think is beautiful, as we are. I'm still under that buzz of the ways and, those paradise plots that saved us dollars is last year, it's coming out back from. That's about the wiggle we might really see, other than maybe having someone help us.
What do you have, what constitutes professional services?
I think a large part of that is CMT, comes out, or engineering firm, it depends on the, engineering work for projects, or engineering under. And have not many projects in the commercial fusion, I guess. I mean, what type of projects are you talking about? Well, for instance, in past, we did, recent past, we did a handy project where we paid the hundreds, that even overlay, but it's supposed to happen already. Actually, it's all September. Maybe runway, of course, we didn't last that, but yeah. So, I don't, see, next year, we don't have anything on the rise, and as I said, there's a, a project that we're going for next year, so I guess we're setting her. Now, we can get ahead of some projects by using these resources, but there's nothing pressing. The real reason for doing, really, any of the projects is a lot of part of, you find the airport, safety airport, runway number one. But it's not something that can, a lot of things are, I guess. We talked about affirmative fans, which is a, a big issue number one. So, a lot of things that we need to do is, like, the return on investment, pretty good, a hundred and fifty thousand a year. We rent mine for a ten percent match, that's part of the journey.
Okay, so then what about the eighty thousand, sixty million dollars for aviation fuel? For tomorrow?
That, personally, I don't, I would never count aviation fuel grant here as a, as a real profit, I guess. Because it happens, you know, every year.
So, we sell that, we buy that, and then we sell that.
Right, so, so those numbers are kind of, you know, give each other at the highest cost, the higher, of course, those numbers.
Yeah, if you look up at the top, top line of the meeting.
So, this says aviation fuel, so what is it? So, are we talking about airport fueling station?
Yeah, that's right, you look up to this top off, and that makes it, you know. And the median average, as I said, probably the average profit above expenses is about six thousand a year. That's how many years we can, have to get a new credit or a machine out there, and that cost is fifteen, eleven, 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 so. That's why I wouldn't really ever call it profit, because it's something that's going to change in the future.
Now, there was talk, I think it was last year, about, is he bringing one of the water lines down? For safety?
We're going to need a hard cut for that.
Right, but it wasn't, it wasn't a. It wasn't a large sum, I think it was like ten thousand or something, didn't know if we'd be able to.
Is the fire hydrant closer to the hangers or something like that?
Oh, yeah, we don't have water coming down, the hanger down, down below, and that's true.
This was the exact thing.
Again, that's kind of a.
Yeah, we, we talked about extending the line from suck up down to the, to the airport, to be able to put a fire hydrant down there. We talked about it last.
I, I think that's what you guys were searching for, what would be eligible for that specific money. And that was one of the things that fell in that category, rather than high need, it was, what might qualify for free money.
Right, is that care spray?
But we don't, we don't serve, we don't actually serve the airport water.
But just being a government fund, it's going to be a state.
The next fund we'd like to discuss is on page three, solid waste.
And that again is not part of the general fund, but it is under the, the direction of Public Works, of our, with Public Works, we wanted to talk about it. And this one gets a little bit complicated, because the Public Works Committee came back, and everyone is aware of that, about the, the recommendation that we have for the contract with R and W. So, we have a contract with R and W, which we will, we would like to bring back to the council at the next council meeting to act on, and that impacts this budget. Carmen, do you, you don't want to go ahead and hold it out a little bit, just get the numbers on that?
Well, the numbers you have before you were generated before we had the R and W proposal and Public Works Committee meeting. So, there, on the papers you see before you, there's a thirteen thousand dollar deficit that we would want to make up. So, with, with the new proposal. So with, with the new proposal, our total revenue would be five hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred. And the total expenditures would be five hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. So there's still a difference of fourteen thousand dollars that solid waste fund would not have. And, and those numbers would be that we would bill our customers the same amount we pay the contractor. And that has been what we've done historically. We historically paid the contractor the same amount that we received for the trash collection. Now, in the R and W proposal, it was just for residential trash collection, and that's the rates that we're talking about.
So this number that you see here.
So, so if we keep with bill in, pay out the same amount, the revenue would be five hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred. And the expenses would be five hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Roughly fourteen thousand dollars.
But, but what happens is that presumes that we enact a new seventeen dollar fee. The numbers you see here is without the seventeen dollar fee. So now what happens, we enact the seventeen dollar fee and there's built fifteen thousand dollars.
Correct.
So if you build for work, cost, how can we ensure it?
Because there's other things that go into this. In this setup. We transfer five, five percent gross receipts out of solid waste, like we do on the other utility funds. So that amount will also increase because our new revenue base will increase. So the amount we pay to general fund will also increase. If we would want it to come out zero, we could adjust our, the amount we bill out and keep, you know, disincrease the amount that we bill out and, uh, and not, you know, go with the proposed rate on the payrolls and contracts.
By a dollar, so what we're saying is the contract that we've come back of R and W increases the, the cost for R and W to seventeen dollars, but we charge eighteen dollars. The eighteen dollars makes up for that thirteen, fourteen thousand dollar deficit.
So the question that we set. Last year, we added a dollar. Supposed to go for about nine months. We're taking that dollar off, or we can add it? No, that dollar is not included. Okay, and so when is that stopped? Uh, I believe on the October one, you're like, so it's like, I think. So, so you could, this is just a new item that we're thinking about. So it could be to continue, you know, it could be going on to the residential trash, it could go a dollar on to the recycle fee. You know, that could be available for, you know, whatever the solution may be. Correct.
All the same pot.
Right.
It's going to be adding more expenses to the, roughly.
And this, and this covers the first receipts, which all the other utilities pays. And, and it, it assists with covering the costs of staff non, that have direct contact with residential waste recycling. And all the products we offer.
So I'm suggesting, then you, you put that on your, your list of things also to talk about as we get through here, because this is an increase, and there are other increases that also we have to talk about, so good consideration. Any other questions on solid waste, then?
And everybody's, the, the new contract, trash contract, basically six, seven, four, fifteen, or seventeen dollars.
And that did have a, a reduction clause in it, so Jim Shrimpton is working on something, so the trigger point, so if something's happened, then they say that clause, diesel fuel goes back.
It's, it's a one year, it would be the one year.
No, we're talking about re, less than one year, we build that.
That's, that's not what the community said, it's one year.
I think we, but I think we had a reduction clause.
Yes, reduction clause at one year.
Yeah, reduction clause in there, and I think she's right, because she said it, and, and that would be the one year, but.
Okay.
Well, then I, I don't remember that way.
Pardon me?
Both are correct.
Okay, whi- which, say that again.
Both are cor- correct, there is a, a reduction clause we were wanting to put into that contract, and it's going to be.
Those are one year?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
So then that leads us to the cemetery department, which is on page thirty. Which is cemetery. The only, you know, very conservative, the budget, uh, they have an increase of like seven thousand dollars in that week. Ted, you have more information on what that increase is, a capital project or not, or structure system stress?
Structure system, now, uh, we're wanting to rock the entire driveway out of the Dunking Dangles and sort of areas up and rock out the other cemeteries. They're all the new highway. It's going to take around five thousand dollars to rock all of that, so we added, added that for the extra yard this year.
And I had requested that after, and so they had some people on, and some of those areas.
I believe a couple of years ago, we had two thousand dollars, and we did something with the, I remember it was out in the woods. Uh, they took out, uh, money that was going to be used for cemetery roads, that totally went to zero. And, um, so now that's, yeah, that's for my, my estate.
Like, if we're doing milling on these roads, can we use that to offset the cost of the ground? Is that feasible?
Going back to me by putting millings on, there isn't enough rock to rip the base, if it ever rained on there, it just.
Just not thinking about this, all the bases.
Turns to more mud and really.
Okay.
It's, it's not much of a, it doesn't have a base to it.
Once we have a base there, would it make sense to use milling to, you know, to sort of maintain?
We could, we could.
In the past, sometimes we've gotten rid of our millings, and I'd like to see us find a way to actually use it.
Yeah, we could, get a good hot day, still, a little milling, still have a little bit of oil in it. Get a good hot day, and once we get a base established, put millings down, and then we, we've got a roller, we'll just roll it in there, we can do that.
Yeah.
Would you feel like that's something in the ground?
Yeah, absolutely. We gotta get a base established for it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, any other questions on cemetery?
So, community development, excuse me, um, page twenty-eight. There, there's a very slight increase from the current year we're living in to next year. This is community development, this is your rises departments. There is, I don't have really much to say about that.
Yeah, I went through the budget, looked at it with a microscope, and, you know, tried to cut what we could cut from. We reduced a little bit, like professional services, you know, professional services account, we can say for like engineering surveying, uh, you know, hire a consultant or an expert or anything that you're dealing with, like in such a manner. Uh, we cut, uh, promotions and marketing. Some main street contributions, a couple of years ago, we turned from five thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars. It was pretty slim picket, it's my part, but, but, I'll do the best I could. Say it again. I, I've cut, uh, promotions and marketing and professional services.
We have quite a many who's in memberships and subscription. Almost all of them.
Membership, membership and subscriptions is basically, uh, you know, like, uh, we carry certifications, or we have a membership with the organization that we're a part of. You know, part, part membership is like the, uh, health band membership, uh, staff carries like, uh, not for me. Membership seems like the basic, uh, mental board, uh, not, uh, uh, front plane, that's for membership. Things of that nature, that we have to do, membership certification for.
What kinds of subscription? Our civic, it's not civic.
Oh, citizen service, yeah. The main ones are citizen service software, uh, part of my ride, we didn't have any way of controlling or maintaining records for like permitting, uh, animal cases, code enforcement cases. Uh, that is seventy-five hundred dollars per year, and it's, uh, it's, it's like for four users. Uh, like Craig, myself, Brian, and Hilbreth, and, uh, and Kat, we have a membership, subscription, subscription to that, uh, program, so we can log in there and, uh, and our information is in the system.
It's a soft one, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, when we were looking at those type of programs, it was probably the, the best one for the bank for the buck, because we could make revisions, you know, it, it was one hundred percent tax support, and no additional costs. So a chance your question, really, that's enjoy your life.
It just seems like a big job.
Yeah.
For one, and they're not using me that.
Well, we have four vehicles. I think they're fortunate enough to have one of their vehicles in the house.
What was your most painful cut?
Uh, I would say like professional services, because, you know, like I use it, you know, uh, sometimes, uh, Zach may use it for a private, like a subdivision or something. Uh, professional service is part of the main one that gets hit up a lot, you know, I like to have, kept it up at the, you know, like fifty-five thousand mark, what we think they do.
Because it's up ten thousand pretty much, too. So if you look in twenty twenty-one, it's, uh, it's around my ceiling.
And I would say another big thing was the marketing and promotion, because, you know, like, you talk about economic development, you have the always, the, uh, the voice to be, trying to get the word out. I know a couple of years ago, I had some brochures painted up, we hand those out, try to get on the website, just to get people familiar, you know, put the camera on the back.
The next fund that would be associated with town is code enforcement and inspections, that's on page thirteen. We call that, that department number is ten twenty-four. Their current budget was four hundred and four thousand, and now we're, we're projecting, um, we're giving here three hundred and eighty-three thousand. We have a younger staff that need a code enforcement, and we have, um, our inspector and our deputy inspector that are relatively new to our system. So.
Yeah. You know, with the, the new staff coming on board, uh, they're going to be required to give their certifications, complete education credit. Uh, one of the two obvious things that we cut within this party was, uh, capital projects, uh, that, which is about ten thousand dollars for that, is now zero, uh, for those capital projects. We're going to use that to make some additional improvements to the animal care facility, uh, you know, like paving, driving, you know, to, to, like, trash company backs up to attach to the dumpster, when it rains, and it's, you know, it's stuck, or they have got stuff, things that have to be pulled out. Uh, we got a travel right now, we ended up moving that dumpster from the, uh, East River Building to the West River Building, so we weren't traveling as far. So I guess there was a, we should try to take that, and then, obviously. And the other thing that we cut was the, uh, uh, third street dangerous structures, basically demolition program, uh, twenty thousand dollars, sixteen thousand dollars. And we would like to get as many dangerous buildings down as possible, but I figure we could probably do two this year, uh, and get those buildings down.
What have you usually been able to do?
I think in the past, maybe like four to five structures. I'd say the, the demolition cost was maybe like five to eight thousand dollars per structure, residential structures.
So down to sixteen gives you down to two structures this year.
Correct.
Are we, are we coming out, I mean, because most of those lots are selling.
Yeah.
So are, are we coming close to netting out?
I don't think you'll ever recoup your money, the goal is to get those structures down and to put a new truck on there so you can start seeing the reflection in utility usage and, you know, sales tax, or, you know, those people that, you know, moved Cameron, they're going to be spending money in Cameron.
You have a property tax.
Yeah.
It, it helps the property tax base for the city, and, and those tax amounts are, are small enough, you're not going to see a big bang all this year.
Over time, you'll see the impact.
Of course. Yeah, my, I mean, my point is, is when that new one goes out, now you've got seventy-five or a hundred years of revenue, so even though it's not, it may not get a revenue use like the first year, that's another one of those things that, uh, it may make sense to look at. Having a few more homes taken down, if you do a few additional moves, so.
So how many, how many houses have you been logging, do you list?
For, like, properties that's for sale?
Or demolition?
Uh. I didn't say, okay, we're going to do two, but is there, I would say.
Another hundred, four, a hundred, four distractions that need to go away?
I had a list, all left of, uh, the demolition properties that were on there for last year, and I went and looked at them, and four that had not been demolished, two were being repaired, two are just sitting, and we want to try to address those, but there are certain others. So to answer your question, maybe eight to six.
So Tim, let's go back to the question that you posed, because you know, the best, how many properties do you think, do you still have that you need to sell?
Five.
You have five?
Yes, we just had three surveyed, so we didn't match, actually.
Here now.
The, the three that were surveyed, I went around and looked at, two of them, we already tried to sell, and that's, we have five, we sold three, two of those didn't sell, so, because we're in the survey, there's plus a little bit. So if I'm aware of at least three, I don't know, I think it's five total, and those are.
Do you have a plan on building?
The ones that sold have been, we just.
I saw a file online. I saw a file online and.
Yeah.
What do we usually get for those?
Uh, I think two of them went for just over seven thousand when they traded six so far.
We usually ask them in the bed what our house property is, how many times we've been in charge. And what demolition costs.
It should be close to a lock, right?
It was, they had, I, we had a little spreadsheet where we had, you know, like some of the stuff the city had. They actually bought that city money sometime and washed that off. I think it was like ninety-three hundred, once you survey and everything. So then we get seven, maybe six hundred years. It's close, but it's certainly not profitable. So it's profitable, private industry would take care of it.
Last year, the first round of offer, we had the new bits and it was, you know, still using the toll bill.
Right.
So the second round of offer, it's been maybe cut out a million and fifty, the leadership, all of them buy the app. So some of them are not selling.
And those two that didn't sell, they will sell. I mean, just the time of year, the date that was going on, you know, we would, you know, we're going to just get those on the market. About the end, I would say within the next two to three years, we might be ready.
So when we sell a property, how long do they have to go, to start building?
They have two years to build a single family home, that's part of the agreement. Whether it's fifty-fifty or hundred, well, hundred percent, well, fifty-fifty and hundred percent.
To me, even if you're going negative a couple of thousand on each house, to turn it and clean up that neighborhood, put, put peer pressure, because I've watched that, when that old house comes down and something new comes up, that neighborhood, many of those homes will start to fix up. And to do that, and then to give seventy-five or a hundred years additional revenue, to me, that's, this is a pretty good trade on the item. To me, I put more money in there and take money to help sustain.
So what I would suggest is you put that on your list again, and then if we come back at the end, we'll find out where, what other area we can take money out of to put back into this line item.
I've been chewed on for almost every day, uh, except maybe that the offices.
And they have, like, there's been a problem, right?
Yep.
And the eight hundred and five, the code enforcement, they pulled down?
It, it's very difficult for code enforcement to force in that neighborhood if they don't love it and they're a bad example.
Actually, man, I get, you know, we've got, you know, he was a developer, he's been doing terrible right now. I was struggling with property changes with him, I told him, I said, I'm looking at him, he says, he's been looking at him. He deals like, uh, buying house, renting a home, so he's wanting to come up here and go and see what properties we got.
Maybe, maybe an income homes?
No, 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 these are homes that he deals in homes and he likes to play with his people. He rents out with his, yeah. You know, just looking at his product, I mean, very nice, he's a home.
The other thing is, we've talked about political houses. If we're selling locks, they're seventy-nine thousand versus the cost of new lock, well, well, we're going to come closer to getting maybe a little more political house. So I don't have a great deal to say.
Thank you very much.
On page twenty-nine, yes, the newest building in Washington.
Zach, would you like to, uh, go through that one?
Sure. Uh, again, this is, this is just for, uh, City Hall. Um, we also do include a portion of the worker league's tournament, uh, portion of his salary is funded through this. The reason why I get to talk about it is because three quarters of the funding for this, this one, along with a few others, comes from, comes from utilities. So, um, again, really not much, not much change to what we're doing. Um, we do, we do transfer fifteen thousand dollars every year for capital projects. We've got quite a few projects that we need to look at and consider. Um, but, uh, but again, like I said, this all does come from, mostly comes from utilities. So again, not much change from your side.
The janitorial contract, you want to keep coming back, very extraordinary.
Again, not to, not to be demented, but, you know, like I said, we got fifteen thousand dollars for capital projects. I know we've got, we need a new, uh, a new shelving system in our upstairs vault. We're busting the seams up there, we're busting the seams downstairs in this vault. We've got a big vacant room here next to us we probably need to do something with. We got a roof that's twenty years old, we got a sign out front that doesn't work, we've got brick. I mean, so we got quite the list of capital projects to do here at City Hall if, if there was still money available.
Do you need that, need external?
Yeah. Yes.
We need new carpet.
New carpet, new paint, um, yeah, like I said, the list, the list goes on and on. And again, we're not, we're always going to have things to do and upgrade and upkeep and maintenance things. But again, the roof is something that, like I said, it is twenty years old. That is something that we, we're going to need to be serious about, uh, if it was for long. The bricks, not only on, on the side of the building, but the bricks on the, on the terrace out front, uh, are going to be needing some attention before long, so.
Should, should.
Yes.
They've been on the bus to be taken care of.
I think our, our last, uh, our last bid to, just to do the bricks on the front side of City Hall, um, and that's, that's not including the bricks on the terrace and the landscape, but actually the bricks on the side of the building, uh, was thirty thousand dollars.
I'm doing it by Google, I'm doing talking about this.
Tuck point seal. Yep.
So Carmen, um, have we looked at other communities that have had a lot come in to see what the increase was or was satisfied?
Can you say it's not broken out when you, I mean, it's not broken out this?
No, I know, I know it's not, but you can see that you're getting this and all of a sudden you're getting this. We know it's got to be.
Well, and then you're doing graphics of what's going on in that community. We, we take over a lot of the software, whatever business came in, whatever business that had gone out.
Just like, like the price fluctuation of, you know, it's gasoline, groceries, whatever. Things that bother us so much, I don't know if it's because of the cost.
And you can touch that on our graphs. So when you start the budget, you start with the amount of revenue that we got last year? Are you, is that how you start?
Yes, the revenues and expenses have a lot of historic value on what we spent last year, what we received last year. And you, and you just work it out from there, like that's where you start.
Right, okay. Well, because maybe next year if we got more money, that's, we're going to.
And that's what we did. And I said at our last meeting, we did increase our self-tax projections more than normal because we've seen a higher trend, but we do not want to overestimate this trend.
You don't know if it's because of COVID and everybody staying on.
Exactly, we just don't know, but no, we did increase our percentage more this year than we had in the past.
Okay. Right after the book started stating that, so everybody, everybody needs to just support the young people or something. Was that what you said?
Hard put up.
That was the opposite, across the board, that way not. So power to the people, there's no reason.
Hopefully it won't happen again.
I have a question on here. I have a question on, because my daughter's been so old. Is there on the new fields of mine, you know, for the seed, how's that named?
She plays softball in the school? She plays softball at the school?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, he does seem to probably.
I was going to say, they, they got those three that are behind the.
The new ball field is only, only about a city or?
Yes, but it's still in the part of the world. And they're still discussing how they're going to rent them out, close for ten minutes, that kind of. All of it.
But if, but like the other standalone events we have had, you bring those, you bring people to our community, they like our community, they'll come back, visit our community. So it may not be immediate, but we hope to see future.
We travel all over Kansas and Missouri, it's hard places. Somebody's talking, like, please summit?
Yeah.
Baltimore, Denver, oh my God, they got to make more money than we do. I mean, I was trying to stall, you know.
They sell tickets.
I have the money that's been on job for a fact. Worth every dollar.
Well, Mayor, we have one more item in the general fund. If I could suggest we finish that on, maybe we take a break and look at some of the goodies that, uh, sorry, the. The last, the last item then is municipal court. We talked last week about the consideration about moving the municipal court. And you all can think about that, but the issue is if we even wanted to do that, we probably did not that, do that during this year because it's too complicated to do that. There is some savings that results in it, uh, but there is some disadvantages to it. So you at least keep that in your mind and think about. But the general fund, uh, item of the municipal court is still on, and that's the last item. Tom, do you want to address a little of that?
Um, I, okay, municipal courts, on page thirty-one. So the twenty-twenty-two budget was sixty-five thousand dollars, the twenty-twenty-three budget is sixty-nine thousand dollars. The direct revenue associated with municipal court will now, is estimated at sixty-nine thousand dollars. The municipal court expense budget is sixty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, another expense which we probably wouldn't have, even if we had to, did not keep municipal court, would be the prosecutor, the ordeed prosecutor, if you call it that. The municipal prosecutor is located in the police department. State of Missouri said the prosecutor cannot be paid out of the court budget. So there's a ten thousand dollar line item in the police department for the prosecutor. I believe this next year we will probably have to be changing prosecutors because of some status that our current prosecutors, adults, is changing jobs or job description is changing. But there may be, she took a different job, so there may be a cost differential there. We've been fortunate to spend ten thousand dollars for a prosecutor, so we're going to expect that to change. So we can directly say our court system pays seventy-nine thousand dollars out. And our history tells us that we would be lucky to get sixty-nine thousand dollars in and all the different fines and costs associated with.
So Stephen and I talked on last Wednesday, we kind of thought maybe that if this was something that we decided to do, that maybe we could get information within six months and information within six years. Have you changed your mind about that or have gotten some more information?
No, maybe that, that's about right, and that's just an estimate. You know, you, you could do it, maybe you could do it this year, but.
Start.
Yeah.
But maybe within six months because then, you know, if we can do that, then we could get ourselves thirty-five thousand dollars.
If the court system was not here, uh, we would still get a percentage of our fines. We would still have an expense to pay a clerk, probably a clerk from Quin County. And I just, we have no idea what those costs.
Before we, I would like a, a best estimate of how much of an increase it's going to get our budget for sending our officers down, sending our staff down, spots, or, you have to figure that in too. Does this take away from something or overtime or whatever it is? That's the kind of the number that you would need to know along with.
Sure, and maybe next, next week when you come back to us, one of the points the council wants us to do is to look at that. We could do a serious study, go out and really do the numbers, get back and talk to the people and find out what the numbers are and the advantages and disadvantages and bring that back to you. Then it might be a budget adjustment in six months.
And I would thank the board for some input from the chief, Dan, uh, his wife. Just to add, just to add, operations.
And talk to some of the agents of help. Shelley, do you have anything to add to the municipal court, those people that are, a lot of them are working with you?
Um, I would just say that, um, our budget pays for ten percent of the court books out and the court does not pay for the backup person that I have to provide. The court books are here, you know, they don't pay for, um, what the police department pays for, they would. Your pay day was not correct, so, I mean, there's other expenses associated with court that we can pay for a lot. Doesn't quite cover, is not quite, doesn't quite cover it.
Okay, any other questions on that? Do you want to take a short break, Mayor?
Sure.
And we'll start the other funds.
Is there a property tax? Is there change of our monitoring utility bills? Is there insurance coverage? The large item here is the municipal ban contract that council agrees to every year, or it's, you know, it's an annual contract. Um, the current, we did the new budget based off of the current year budget. And for the last few years, they've been operating at like a four to five thousand dollar deficit. They have plenty of reserves to carry on this trend for a while because we were, we did not have any con, a concert season during the COVID year. So they was able to, you know, retain that one year's worth of property tax revenues. I'm sorry, I am not familiar with the exact number of concerts that are in the current ban contract. But they're, again, that is negotiated every year. They have the funds to continue on for another year, doing as we have for the last two to three years.
Any questions there?
Generally push.
That one's easy, yep. Okay, Carmen, now I think what we have.
Now, we're on to library, which is on page thirty-eight. Joe Ellen and her library board put together their own budgets every year and their own budget adjustments. As represented here, they, on page thirty-eight and thirty-nine, they present a pretty well-balanced budget every year. And Joe Ellen, if you have information you'd like to share, highlights?
Um, we, we received more revenue than we anticipated, so we are, uh, Um, we, we received more revenue than we anticipated, so we are, uh, right on budget for, from the revenue side. We did only anticipate about forty five hundred dollars in grants, and we're gonna be up to about ten thousand three hundred, and so that, uh, we're still waiting for about nine thousand dollars of that to come in, and, um, our miscellaneous and, uh, fingerprinting proceeds have been consistent. Um, we always kinda base our state grant funds on forty five hundred until I see some grants coming in, so that won't change much at all. I anticipate, um, revenue would be at two hundred and seven thousand dollars versus uh, this year's anticipated was a hundred and ninety nine. Um, we balance the budget out at, at two thousand, two hundred and seven thousand dollars. Um, I don't anticipate, uh, any operating expenses changes, we just increased, uh, we just put in a new HVAC system in the second floor, and that was our big, major purchase this year, but at this point, um, uh, we're, we're in pretty cheap. I don't know if this is the time to mention this, but we didn't do the front, cause we were getting the front entrance, because costs have gone up, um, so that's still tabled. Um, we'll look at grants and things for next year and have discussion on it with the council, what, next, next week?
Yes, we have, we'll have that ordinance on for next council meeting following to transfer that money to your account.
Okay. And that will continue next year. Any questions?
Thank you. For all you guys too.
You're welcome.
You've done such a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, continuing on in your packets, the next fund is the community center fund, fund nineteen. The revenues and expenses for that are all on page forty. Um, we have placed in the community center fund, a capital projects line item of twenty thousand dollars. That is contributed from general fund. We do not have a list of exact capital projects that they may want to do, but because they did just do the HVAC, which was fifteen thousand, one of seventeen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Uh, we know there are more improvements to be made, so we just placed twenty thousand dollars in there. That would, you know, would be a small project, but it would be something they could work on.
I think one of the bigger projects they wanna complete at these community centers, the, uh, restrooms, they wanna make sure they're ADA compliant, and I believe so, but they also wanted to do the main entrance. Uh, we are, you know, possibly looking at what funds are available through the state to try to offset our costs to go to get less, you know, additional funds or free money from the state to do improvements to that area.
And community, the community center fund is straight general fund, right? Budget wise, the budget did?
It's, it's not part of the general fund, yes, that's correct.
It is not part of the general fund, but general fund is contributing twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, so I have a question at the top. You have, you're estimating, or you're good, the budget for the center rental and event fees is ten thousand dollars, and then you have transfer from reserves, is, okay.
And, and that transfer is from general fund, yes.
Okay.
Because we assumed responsibility of the building, and that would make any improvements that are made our responsibility.
Okay.
One of the other improvements that were done at the community center was the, uh, the parking entrance, the parking spots that were done by.
The sidewalks.
Sidewalks by our own public works crew.
And this may change a little. If we get the ARPA funds and if the council decides to use ARPA funds on the community center, then perhaps we could use that, we do not have to use money from the general fund reserve. Right now, since we can't count on it, we do have to make some improvements such as restrooms and that sort of thing, so they need a little money.
Which ARPA funds are we talking about? Cause I mean, I know there's a lot out there, but which ARPA funds are we talking about?
Well, this is the, I think, nine hundred ninety six thousand dollars that we had on the second half. We used our first half on the, uh, the, uh, community park, and the second half is out there, and they have not yet released it to us, but we do have that money then that we can go back and, and select projects to do.
Okay, but we can't have everything coming out of that ARPA fund, cause.
No, we, we have, yeah, we have about five projects, and we'll come back and we'll all get to look at those in detail.
I think there's different categories of ARPA funds, uh, like one may, we may qualify as community revitalization, that may fall under that category. And if I'm not mistaken, they, there's probably twenty five million dollars set aside to state for those.
Well, I understand that, it's just that we keep saying, okay, we can take this out of ARPA funds, or we can take this out of ARPA funds, we gotta be careful, cause we can't take it all out of ARPA.
True.
That's why I wanted to know which one it was.
If it came down and we actually had to do it, we could take that twenty thousand and throw it back to the general fund.
Exactly.
That's.
Good deal.
One question.
Yes. Okay, uh, can we go back to the utility funds now? We've got Zach here with the majority of, a great majority of money we need to talk about here, and it will impact some of the other ones. We go with, uh, electric, let's start out with that. Page five. Carmen, we do have a summary on that you'd like to go over, or we turn it over to Zach?
Um, in, in the proposed numbers you have, there is not a rate increase. Um, we do, you know, so I don't really have much on that, except in the utility funds, we did not have rate increase numbers included in any of this. So the deficit numbers that you have is based on our current rates.
And so when you say rate increases, you're talking about the money that we're gonna increase for like the sewer and the water line and all of that, no?
Right, no, the, these, this report is based off our current utility charges, we charge our residents at the present.
Okay, got it.
Zach, why don't you go over the electric fund then?
Okay. Um, again, I'll just apologize upfront, this is gonna be painful. Um, but, uh, regarding the electric fund, ju- just a note to, to, to make, your, your summary sheet and some of the numbers in here, um, we, we made, we made, this is prior to us making some changes, so actually, the first run, the electric department was about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars short, not the two hundred and eight thousand dollars as you're definitely on your summary sheet, but, um, again, all the utility funds are set the same way, the first page is the revenue, the next page is administration, and there's collection, distribution, production, and then the last one would be the, the, or would be the distribution and collection. So regarding utility funds, like Carmen said, there, there are not any rate increases reflected in these numbers right here. Um, and, and you can see, especially looking at our commercial sales, um, you know, we're, we're projecting a, a several hundred thousand dollar increase in commercial sales next year, just from the addition of, uh, a couple of our new businesses and the prison coming back, uh, moving back over to the prison. So, sales are, are, are good, and like I said, and continue to, to trend upward, which again, what we've seen, we've seen in the past, um, but, uh, uh, again, like I said, that's the big, the big change, or the big source of revenue there for the, for the electric. So moving on to the next page, the administration expense, again, this is, majority of this is our, our transfers to the other departments, um, to fund those, um, and then also our debt service there for AMI system. Uh, again, these numbers will change a little bit as we make changes to other departments, these numbers will change and be reflected there, so, uh, this will continue to be pretty fluid. Um, moving on to page seven is the, this is our, our production, which essentially is that, uh, next, the, the last line item there, the seven thirty one, two eighty, that's our purchase of power, that's what we purchased from Plaque Clay, um, and as you can see, with more utility sales, obviously we have to buy more electricity, so we see a pretty significant increase in that. Um, our wholesale rate remains pretty steady, somewhere between six and a half and seven and a half cents, so we're, we're still doing, uh, still doing pretty good on our wholesale rate. And if you flip over to the last page, or next page, page eight, this would be, uh, our distribution crews, this would be Jay's crew, um, and again, where, of, where all our operation expenses are. Um, we have seen a significant increase in, um, material, transformers, wire, and, and everything has gone up considerably. Um, you know, like I said, I think we can manage most of it well, you know, the, we have fifty thousand dollars in there for transformers, um, if we spend fifty thousand, good, if we have to spend more than that, that means we have more new businesses, so it's, it's a, it's a good problem, I guess, so, um, like I said, so we have that in there. The one thing that I will note is you'll see down towards the bottom line, two seventy three, equipment vehicle purchase, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's for our bucket truck that we ordered last August, that was supposed to, this should that will be here next summer, so, um, we kinda have to leave that in there, cause we, we hope that we get it next year, but we have already ordered that, so. Um, with all that considered, um, we, we really need to, to take a look at our, our rates and, and our rate structure. And the, the one area that we are, I hate to say lacking, but we do not charge enough for basic cost of service. Um, our rates have been designed, and not just ours, but historically, in most communities, you, your rates were designed that you had a minimum cost of service and you, you made up all your costs on the actual usage. Um, well, there, there, there's a shift from that, and like I said, and we, we're, we're not, the city of Cameron is kinda falling behind on that. Um, our rates right now are structured that the more you use, the less we charge you. And while that's a, that's been a very popular method, that's not how we buy electricity. We, we buy it at a flat rate, so we need to be charging at a flat rate. And, and it isn't just for electric, it's for all of our utilities. Now, sewer, we do, we charge it at a flat, flat rate, doesn't matter how many thousands a gallon you use, you, you pay the same. We need to get to that with electric as well, um, because again, I think ultimately, the goal that we should be striving for is that I think we need to be able to offer a time of use rate, so that we offer you a different rate if you use electricity from, you know, midnight to three AM as opposed to, you know, three to six in the afternoon, because ultimately there is a difference in that cost of utility. But in order to get to that single rate, we have to get our cost of service to a level that it supports a lot of these basic functions that we have to provide. So, you know, right now, we, we charge a men, we charge a minimum of seven ninety five. Um, you know, you compare that to communities around here, you know, Chillicothe is twenty six dollars for bare minimum, uh, Macon is eighteen dollars. So, again, we need, that's where we need to make our adjustment, we need to make our adjustment on that, on that flat fee, uh, again, it's like I said, so we can move towards a, a single rate. So what, what we're, what we're proposing would be increasing that current basic cost of service from seven ninety five to twelve dollars, so that's additional four dollars and five cents, and that would generate about a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars, which would cover our shortfall in the electric. Oh, it gets worse, but that's just electric.
Now, you've met, you've been talking about this often on, since I've been around, not so much that, but the other, that we should be raising it to two percent every year.
Yeah, and that, that was our, our last rate increase, you know, said, hey, you're caught, you gotta adjust your cost of service, and, and they recommended two percent every year for the next five years, and then we'll reevaluate, and that was two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, we haven't.
Haven't done anything.
Well, we increased it that year, like twelve percent, didn't we?
Seven percent, mhm. Those follow me, yeah.
Because that's when we lost the prison?
So you, you, when you're purchasing the power, you stay at the same rate no matter what? Whether it's three o'clock in the morning, or, so why, why would you want to step it from peak times?
Because there, there's, there's going to be a, there's going to be a shift in, in how that's, how that's done. Um, Amarin announced here a year ago, that within five years, they will, they will offer that to all their customers. So if the IOUs are starting to do that, it won't be long before the co-op are doing that, and then we need to do it as well.
My son in Kansas City was shocked when he, he was in a year ago, in the spring and in the winter, in the summertime, his electricity bill went three times, and he called them, and it was, where he, when he uses electricity, and they can do anything they want.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, currently, we do, we, we pay a flat rate, but I don't think that's always gonna be the case.
Why would we not base it on whatever it costs us, a flat rate, why have we selling it at a flat rate?
Right, no, no, again, I, I think that's, that's where, that's where we need to be, that's what we need to do, but unfortunately, the way our, the way our structure is set up, we have a very low cost of service, we charge you a bunch for the very first couple that you use, and then we gradually step down the more you use. We need to be to a point where this is the cost of service, and we charge you a flat, a flat rate. We're trying to transition to that.
So could it be that, that people that don't use very much would actually see a decrease if we went to a flat rate?
Potentially.
What is, what was your biggest cost increases this year, the year, and what you're anticipating for this next year? And aside from the bucket truck?
Um, again, just, just the, the cost of material, um, material, I said, everything's gone up. But again, a, a big portion of the increases, again, obviously from the wholesale purchase, but again, that's because we're selling more.
So who would the change hit worst? Just the, the businesses that use more power? Is that what we did? I'm trying to understand the, the pro of why we've done it like that.
If, if, if you have a low cost of service and it's all based on usage, then you help out the single, the individual user that doesn't use much electricity, and you're putting it all on the businesses that use a lot. If you have a higher cost of service, then that's, that's charging more to the individual customer living on the corner, and somewhat beneficial to the large user. The problem is, is we've, 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 we've put the burden on the business community too long.
But the more power they use, the rate comes down, so that'll make some sense to me.
Right, but again, you're, you're, you're recouping your costs through usage, not through the cost of service.
No, okay.
Well, I think one of the big things to remember is whether it's electric, sewer, water, it's all staying in town, it's not going to some profit center in another community or whatever, it's all being plowed into either cost of operations or maintenance of the system or those kind of things, so just figuring out, what do we need to function?
So you're, you're proposing that we increase those rates, and that's gonna balance this part of the budget?
Yes.
The way it is.
Okay. To twelve dollars.
And leave the rates the same, or we'll come out as well?
No, the rates will be the same.
Okay, if there are no questions, more questions than that, why don't we go to the next one, and you'll, these all kind of three will work together and you'll see itself. Okay, water, Zach?
Yeah, water, um, again, set up the same way. Um, again, we're looking at about a two hundred and sixty four thousand dollar shortfall. Um, again, like I said, I, I think sales have, sales have been down in the past, but again, we're, we've, we've seen a trend that we think we've, we're starting to, we're starting to see an uptick in water sales. Um, and like I said, again, as, as mentioned, this, the rate here does not include any type of rate increase or anything, that's adjusting rates. Um, again, a portion of that does come from the sales tax that we get for water and sewer, that's included in there, um, and also. Um, and also, there's some tower leasing, things like that, that we get, but, uh... So if you move on to the expense side, again, the first page, page ten, is the administration. The one new thing that you'll see in there is, you know, in the past, we did fund the reservoir position. Since we made the, the, uh, the combination with the park. That now is just basically a one line item transfer that we transferred to the park to cover those expenses. Cause that department is now kinda, again, been combined with the park. So you'll see that just in one line item now as opposed to its own separate, um, separate, not fund, but grouping category. But again, most of those, that, that page is just the transfers to the other departments. Moving on to page eleven is the water production at the water plant. This would be Paul Reinhardt and his crews. Again, we're seeing the same thing. An increase in cost of materials is, is, is killing us. But this is a, a little bit easier to identify that, you know, we're two hundred sixty-four thousand dollars short. If you take a look at line item eight twenty-two fifty-one chemicals, you'll notice that went from two thirty-five this year to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And what are those chemicals?
Those are the chemicals that we use to treat our water plant, or our water. So if, and, and that's, and what that, what that number reflects, that number reflects, if we were to purchase all of the chemicals, the same amount of chemicals that we purchased this past year at today's price, that, that's what it is.
I'm sorry, according to Facebook, you don't have enough.
Well, and, and that, that's a good, good point, good transition on to. If you look at line item, um, if you go down to eight, eight twenty-two seventy-five, in, in my figures, we've got, we had sixty thousand dollars in the recovery. It's not showing on here, cause like I said, these are, these are changed a little bit, but we, we have had that conversation about, about the taste and odor. And again, I'll make the, I'll make the caveat here, our water is safe, it meets all of our standards, it, it's safe to drink, there are no issues. It's a quality issue that we're, that we're having to deal with. And, and what, what we believe is part of the issue, granted, this wasn't a, this wasn't a good year, it just, it was something that, that, uh, an issue that we battled, and we weren't the only surface water treatment plant that battled this issue this year, it was pretty common. Our aeration system that we have in our, our reservoir, uh, that's supposed to destratify that and, and keep that mix up, was installed in nineteen ninety-eight. We don't know the conditions of the lines, the conditions of, you know, how effective it really is. And so we've been talking to, to different vendors, different communities to see what, you know, what, what do we need to do here? Again, we, we talked to a company about redoing those lines under the reservoir. Maybe kinda replay, just, just kinda redoing that, getting that back up to speed, a good maintenance. And we think that will definitely help. The cost of that is sixty-two thousand dollars. So that, that's kind of a decision that we looked at council and decided, were there enough complaints to warrant sixty-two thousand dollars worth? And, and we think that will, obviously, that's going to help. That's not going to eliminate the issue, we have the issue every year.
Right.
And, and it's, you know, like I said, some houses have it worse than others, some areas down have it different than others. You know, we try to do some flushing to help, but I don't wanna sit here and say that, you know, give me sixty-two thousand dollars and I'll solve our problem forever. No, that's not the case, but I think it will, it will help.
I will say after that went into effect, it made a big difference in our land board had stopped turning over for...
Sure, it, it, it def, it definitely helps the process, I mean, we can't...
There's various lines in there that are just constantly verbal. They just constantly let air into them so that you don't have the algae blooms and it makes it turn over.
Just, just like in a typical fish tank. I mean, it's the same, it's the same thing, yeah. But again, so the chemicals, that is the big, that is the, the one sole item that you can point to that, um, causes it. Now, do, do I think that, uh, the chemical prices are gonna stay where they are right now? Probably not, but again, I think it's kinda like diesel fuel, that it, it's up and down, and I think we're, hopefully, we're at the top, and we're gonna see a little decline in prices, and it probably won't go down to where it was prior to this, but I think it will come down from where it's at.
So there are any additional chemicals that we're having to use?
No, no.
It's just double.
That's just, it's just double. And, and again, at, at this point, if you had to tell me, I would take paying double as long as you promised me that I can have some. That, that's, that's, that's the next fear is, what are we gonna do? Or is, you know, we did have some issues with carbon earlier in the year and things, and we, we've, we've got a few backups and contingencies in place to take care of a few things, but again, that's a big fear, what if we can't get it?
Does the aeration affect the amount of chemicals you need to use?
Um, yes, yeah, I mean, it definitely, yeah.
So if we would get a better aerating system, we might be able to reduce the number of chemicals?
Yeah, a little, but not much, it's, it's, it's not as good as a, a brine. Brine, not as good as that, it's not, not quite that good, but, but no, it does. But, but it does, I mean, it, it would help, but it's, it's, no, it's minimal, it's minimal.
After you get your new water line, I think of a, cause you're only gonna be two and a half, right?
Yes, yes. Yes, so again, I guess that's the, the silver lining there, that when we're buying water from somebody else that we already had the contract for, that we're locked into that price, and you're right, our savings are gonna be more now that the, now that it's settled.
They're gonna increase the water to the commission, commission has to increase it to the people.
Right, but we have a contract with them.
Yeah, but how, I mean...
With, with the price.
For how long?
Yeah, we're protected for a while.
For how long?
I don't know, but it's, I'll have to go back and look and see what happens.
It hasn't changed yet, but I don't know.
Yeah, so, but no, you're right, I'd say that, that'd be additional savings, I guess, but...
Okay, Zach, so having given us that bad news, can you go back to page nine?
Well, I, I guess the, the next one will be page twelve will be the, the, the distribution, that's Cory's section. Again, nothing is airway, and we're seeing an increase in, in material meters and all that good stuff, but everything else stays the same. No big capital projects. So with all of that being said, um, again, we, we, we're looking at the, the same way, the same thing with the, um, as we were with the electric, you know, our cost of service is, is, is probably below what it needs to be. So we would propose raising the cost of service from fourteen dollars and fifty-two cents a month to twenty dollars a month.
And then what does that do to, does that then balance out your deficit?
No, but it gets us close, that generates an additional two hundred thousand dollars.
Is this in lieu of the twenty-five that we talked about, or is, is it in addition to?
Oh, this is in addition to.
So twenty-five for Genwick and twenty, right?
No, no, going, going, fi- five dollars and forty-eight cents would be the increase. We're going to twenty dollars.
Oh, sure, okay.
And, and Genwick, that would increase, wouldn't increase until next year, that's not a part of the issue, but just, we're, don't do that until we get it.
Starting this for the water after the water. That's no capital project, that is nothing.
No capital projects.
Would your gas have died double too?
Zach, with the increase coming, does it make sense to work on at least some of the major line loss? Does it make any sense to stop some of the leakage?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we, obviously, we'll wanna minimize that as much as possible.
Well, sure, but we don't have any money for capital projects, so...
Right.
I guess my point is, it's going up now, in all likelihood, it's gonna go up again. Do we want to set any money aside for capital projects, or just like keep running out of crap? And I don't know what the answer is, if it makes sense or not, that's, and you're, right now, we're losing one out of every three tablets.
So in order to do that, then, for the capital project, then you have to put more money into the capital project line, and the only way you can do that is increase the rate?
I don't know what the answer is, I'm just asking the question.
Well, the water department is out there all the time trying to reduce the, 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 we, Zach and I were looking at one, one of those this afternoon. They get out there and fix them just as soon as they happen. It's the ones that you know you can't find, those insidious ones that are out there, like that one we had out behind the subway for years.
Or is there something, I mean, that we tighten our system, maybe it's not, maybe the correct term is not line loss, but something that tightens our system and still reduces that leak now? And it's not cost effective, we shouldn't want to do it.
No, again, I'm, like I said, it's, it's always, it's always in our best interest to, to try to eliminate line loss and to, to, to reduce that number as much as possible. You know, again, in that way, we're gonna have situations like we had yesterday with the, that twelve inch line, half a block from the water plant. Well, we dumped hundreds of thousands of dollars, or hundreds of thousands of gallons down the, down the ditch, just because, I mean, if, if line broke, we got it fixed, got it taken care of, but, and ultimately, there was, there was a ton of loss that happened in that situation, so... Again, there's, there's multiple, there's multiple ways to attack line loss.
Well, do you, I don't know, is anybody want to ask for recommendations from analysts, or just let go on?
Analysis for line loss, do we look at plugging any of the leaks?
Not if it's gonna raise the rates anymore, cause we're raising the rates.
Okay.
I mean, that's the way I feel about it.
Yeah, we have our answer, okay.
Well, you have my answer, yes, I have it.
The only way I could see you doing something is to figure if you're gonna, this is gonna be five bucks, and you gotta go to, the other twenty-five bucks in two years would be doing half of that early to fund fixing. Would that help?
But then you only get part of the people, well, no, I don't, not people, I know what you're saying. But then you'd only get part of the lines fixed.
Right.
But that would be good enough.
Yeah, I mean, for example, if it costs five dollars to fix something, or we ignore it and it costs five dollars every year going forward, are we better off fixing that, that five dollars then? Well, I, I mean, you know, if you have a major leak, you're just gonna continue the leak, and so if you don't...
But, but the biggest thing is, is the leak gonna be the city's leak or...
It's different if it's a person's.
Right, I would be talking about the city's leaks.
So Zach, how long has that went out the by the water plant leak, before we knew it?
Oh, we knew right away. Yeah, that, that was a big one that we knew right, I mean, we knew, we knew really quickly that we have an issue. But a, again, an issue that we ran into yesterday was, uh, um, getting the right valves shut to shut that down, isolate that particular section. And again, and part of that is, um, you know, the fact that we have three members on our crew, don't even have a year's worth of experience between, altogether. I mean, I mean, so, I mean, again, we, we've lost a lot of institutional knowledge over the years. We have some of that down in information, but, you know, when they're out there in the field scrambling to turn, to shut off a, a geyser in the middle of West Street, you know, it's, uh, it's tough, so, but like I said, we, they, they managed to, to get it taken care of, but, uh...
Well, in answer to your question, Dennis, though, we ought to do something we can to examine, so it's not a big extent, where the, the biggest problem with the line loss is, and if we can discover something that is a cheap fix, we can do it.
That's what I'm saying.
The problem in, in many of the cases, the way you fix it is you replace old line, and then that isn't cheap, so... We, I'll put that down, and we will, we'll, we'll study that for you, bring back some answer if we can.
Yeah, I mean, it may be something like replacing some valves or something like that.
Sure.
I mean, those kinda things might, might make a big difference and ultimately save people lives.
What line item does that come out for? This is an electric and water for replacing street cats. That, that are our own?
Those are, those are typically done just in the structure systems and grounds. Um, if it, if it's our guys doing it, if we're contracted to do it with somebody, then we, we do it through the, um, I think we have a contractor wanting the electric and stuff, but yeah. That is an increasing cost as well?
I mean, cause I appreciate you guys, there was like three hundred of them whenever I started on council, three hundred plus, and now it's down to known, isn't it like a hundred-ish?
I think, I think we've got, we look, I think, we've got twelve-ish? Water ones that are out there, I think. I don't think, we, we get some here this week, but yeah, and then we, we, we fixed two, and then we created two more, so, you know, it's, we try.
That's the nature of things.
Okay, i- if there are no more questions than that, we'll get back to the last one of our utilities, the sewer fund, then?
Yes.
Okay, and what page is that?
Starts on page fifteen. Again, the sewer fund was about fifty-eight thousand dollars short, or fifty-nine thousand dollars short. So again, under three, it, it was, was doing okay, but that did not include, um, our four and a half million dollar upgrade to the plant. So tho, that number was not included in this, but, uh, again, same as rest of, we're starting to see a little uptick in, uh, utility sales, which is good. Again, page sixteen, again, is administration, those are the transfers again. Page seventeen is the treatment at the wastewater treatment plant, and that does include, the very first line item there is the contracted operation with Alliance. So that number is included in there, which we know we got a pretty hefty increase over, from last year on that. And then again, same as everything else, it's based on chemical, chemicals, so, um, but like I said, you, you do see the, the cost there for the, the improvements. So what we're looking at regarding a rate increase for sewer, um, again, we'd be doing the same thing on the sewer with the cost of service. We'd take the cost of service from fourteen dollars to twenty dollars, that would generate additional two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And then the additional money, um, we need about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars more to cover the debt service on the project. So we would increase the cost per thousand gallons from four dollars and eighty-eight cents to five dollars and forty-eight cents, a sixty cents increase.
Five dollars a gallon?
To five dollars and forty-eight cents per thousand gallon. Um, so that, if you're looking at a five thousand gallon user, which is what the industry deems as average, that's an eight dollars and ten cent increase. So, I told you...
And this is before the...
No, that, that, no, that, and so that, that's what is needed to cover the debt service for the project, yes, yes. So all three of those total with four dollars and five cents on electric, five dollars and forty-eight cents on water, eight dollars and ten cents on sewer, that comes to seventeen dollars and sixty-three cents more per month.
And when would that start?
October one.
And don't forget, six dollars and fifty cents for trash, unless we're gonna go up to eighteen dollars, and then it's seven dollars and fifty cents for trash.
Was it totally, you gave seven?
Sixty-three.
Figured that one ended seventeen, I thought, wasn't the increase in electric figured in your seventeen dollar increase?
Yeah, yeah, the seventeen sixty-three, that included electric, water, sewer increase.
Okay, not trash.
Not trash.
Okay, I would like to come back to these in three, in a, in a minute, when we get through the rest of funds, where we then will have a conclusion for you, but, uh, the rest of them, I think, are, are getting to be pretty simple, and we can go through this. And I think the next one would be, uh, Carmen, would that be parks?
The parks, yes.
Okay, uh, once you get, what page is that?
Parks, Fund Twelve, again, on page thirty-three. So Parks is still, um, Fund Twelve is like the traditional park fund as we know it. um, Fund Twelve is like the traditional park fund as we know it, and then the half-cent sales tax fund is Fund Twenty. We're, we're trying to keep them somewhat separated, but yet it's all for the same good of the order, it's all for the same good of the Cameron Park system, but we're trying to keep them separated, so the pool operations and the park operations would be in Fund Twelve.
Page forty-one is your fund.
So page, it starts on page thirty-three and then page in Fund Twenty is on page forty-one. Steve, I'm just, all, all of the personnel salaries, those items are in Fund Twelve. Uh, the park board has directionally control over these funds. So, I don't know, that's all I have.
Yeah, Steve, you wanna go through that a little, the park board, and you've done a good job of balancing that.
Uh, twelve forty, if you go to page thirty-four, the park, or the park pool expense, we'll see the biggest thing would be our pool management fee, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, that's Midwest Pool Management, at least it currently is this year. We didn't, we, uh, I mean, everything's pretty standard there, having a new facility, there shouldn't be much needed for system structures or grounds or anything like that, a, a lot of that's still built into the, to the, uh, contract with the, with the Carruthers for any kind of maintenance issues or broken whatever as, as we move forward. So that's pretty much, any questions on the, on the pool side of it? All right, twelve forty-one, park expense, that's, uh, that's Neil's crew and my salaries in there, uh, as far as salaries go. Uh, we did increase system structures and grounds, uh, ten thousand dollars to try to offset the, the price of facilitating the new park, and that's just kind of a, just a, throw me ten thousand dollars out there in hopes that, you know, we, that's a good starting point to know what we're gonna need to maintain that area. If you go to twelve, let's see, back to page thirty-three, twelve sixty-one, three eighteen, to speak to Eric's, uh, point earlier, we increased that, and because the plan is going forward, we will host tournaments, we will rent facilities, uh, that's our plan, so, you know, that, that fifteen thousand dollars, I hope that's really, I hope that increases dramatically, but we wanted to keep it pretty conservative to start off with. So that, that's the plan there, uh, host multiple tournaments, still working with YMCA on the rec level, but do more, host more competitive stuff as well, so that's, that's the increase there, but that also offsets that increase of the, uh, system structures and grounds. Equipment maintenance going up with, I mean, the more equipment we have, the more need for maintenance we'll have, uh, you know, I think it's, everything else is pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, at the current time, there, there, they, you are showing a slight positive balance.
But I think it's, I think as far as public awareness goes, we need to make sure that if there is positive funds in parks, especially the eight cent sales tax and the half cent sales tax can't be diverted to general fund or, you know, I don't know, that sometimes that gets out in social media, that why don't you just take it from this fund? You know, those, those have been voted on by the, by the people of Cameron, so they're already earmarked for said parks business, so.
Okay, can we take a look at park improvement then? That fund is.
Twenty.
What page is that again?
Page forty-one.
Page forty-one. And this one also is pretty straightforward because it's nothing more coming in and going out of that, but we do need to take a look at that. And so, uh, right now, Steve has been following that very closely with the two, uh, groups that are building the, uh, the park and the pool, and, uh, uh, can you summarize that for us a little bit?
Yeah, we're, we're still, uh, working with, uh, a herner on the new park. We're looking at a November, October completion, majority completion date by that time. Uh, Carruthers is done with the pool, other than s- several punch list items that, I'm not gonna get into all of them, but, uh, grass around the pool and just small stuff here and there, but there is a considerable punch list item that still needs to be, some of that stuff can't even be addressed until the season's over. But.
And so we, we still have a little bit of a posi- positive balance at a hundred and twenty thousand or so, I think. Okay, and Steve does, uh, has a meeting with them about every week or every two weeks on, uh, on, uh, Turner now, and we're following that through very closely.
We do have a park board meeting this Thursday that's gonna touch on potentially going underground with power and. That's all I have as far as.
Anybody, any questions on parks then? Well, let's, let's go through some of the, uh, the littler funds then that we've got, which we can just touch on so you have visibility on, uh, we've got the CID fund at next, uh, Tim, can you go through that one for us a little bit? What page is that, Carmen?
Forty-three.
We just look at it.
The CID is basically, um, we have one active CID, it's not really the city's CID, we're just a go, go buy, that's the US thirty-six Bob Griffin CID tax, uh, basically they have a board that formed a CID to generate funds to make capital improvements to the Bob Griffin thirty-six highway, I think, it's anticipated about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand a year, no, about eight, eight, was it, what's the number, Mike?
For what?
For the Highway Thirty-six.
For the repair?
For the balance, for the income.
For their in, that their, their projected income's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year on, on the CID. It could be a little bit higher, but right now it's seen improvements at that level.
And, and basically they use those funds, like I said, to make improvements to that area, uh, Mike's been working, uh, very hard with that group, uh, to basically come up with a project plan to improve that area to, uh, make it easier or make it enticing for people to visit that area.
Yeah, I think that one's pretty simple and straightforward, anything more, Mike, on that?
Yeah, just so you know, that, that plan is moving forwards, uh, it's going, we're sending out for engineering right now, for fine engineering on that, hopefully to see the project happen in two thousand and twenty-four. And that's about a two point two million dollar project.
Any questions on that? Okay, stormwater is the next one, what page, Carmen, the next page, forty-four?
Yes.
Okay, we can take a look at this one, this was its, its own fund and mostly what gets spent out of this, I, Carmen, you can go ahead and summarize that, and then we'll.
The related stormwater issues in the past, several, um, projects have been linked to a street improvement project from the transportation tax, um, the Grok Street project we did and the Ashland Drive, they were combined projects with additional utility funds that have been completed out of those tax revenues. The stormwater tax has another, I believe, ten years on it, and it's a, uh, quarter cent revenue. I don't believe we have any plans for this year, so the monies in this fund will just keep accumulating until Tad and the city does a larger project, right?
Right, yeah.
Zach, you or Ted, either one, you have any upcoming project, more comments on the stormwater there?
Not, not this year, possibly with the Northern Drive and Harris Street projects, that would definitely be used in, that is there.
Would, would this be eligible for like the tube replacements that's needed, say, on Valley?
That's what I was just getting ready to ask.
Uh, I would, I would think those culverts might be eligible, and those are small ticket items, but would allow it to maybe move forward.
I mean, be stormwater.
Yeah, that's.
Instead of taking, instead of happening in the streets, it could go to stormwater.
If it comes from small enough. And if it's, if they're small enough items, it wouldn't really have a big impact on this, but it'd move a bunch of those little projects forward.
Absolutely.
Then on page forty-five is the transportation improvement fund, that would, that's the tax that was just extended last November. Currently, there is no definite plans for this for the next twelve months, but it does, I think there are streets and topics out there that we know we want to do. Um, there again, if we do not spend this cash, it just keeps accumulating, so we have larger pools of funds to work with. Originally, this tax was on major project rebuilds only, and now that level has been reduced slightly. So, and these projects have normally been engineered or definite council direction.
Yeah, and this is the one that we brought back to the Public Works Committee about, uh, the upcoming projects in near future, and I think all the council's aware of that, and, uh, Ted is gonna continue to work on that, will work on those, and we'll bring those back to you with, with the next step on that.
Are these accounts of the monies being held in interest bearing?
Yes.
Kind of figures, like.
Uh, and how much do we have in that account right now? Um, she said it's seven hundred. Approximately a million dollars, oh, okay.
Well, it keeps building up.
Yes.
And we, we earmarked some of that, as, as you know, but also then we will come back to you based on the Public Works Committee, uh, recommendation to the council, so. Okay, uh, next item is, is TIP, Ti- Tim, we'll let you talk a little bit of that, that's another easy one out there.
Uh, I work with the TIP board and we have some active TIP projects out there, some have paid off. That is basically, uh, you know, a development incentive for development that these people have paid into or paid out over a twenty-three year period. I believe you said Warshilms is paid off, and Doctor is compared.
It's very big.
Yeah, it's very big.
And the, um, and the K and V properties are still in repayment?
Yes.
The K and V properties.
That's Michelle Puckett's, uh, project. And the ones that I've already paid off early, you will see that money coming back into the, the revenue stream.
Right.
Right.
Uh, yeah, not much movement on that one, does anybody have any, any questions on TIP? Okay, I wanna go back to, uh, public safety improvement, and that's basically the, uh, police department, and I think, uh, Rick could address that before, but if, when he was talking about the police department, does anybody have any question about public safety improvement then?
You mean about the tax?
Yeah.
Anything in general?
Yeah, the fund on that, uh, in fact, well, let's, let's, uh, Chief, maybe you could tell basically what you're, what you're using that public safety improvement fund, how much there is and what you're planning on doing with it then.
So roughly, it's about thirty thousand dollars is coming in a month off of our tax. For the raises that we've got to be competitive with other police departments in our area and also all around the area, they're moving ten thousand dollars roughly over a pay period, so we get two of those, so twenty thousand is moved over every month out of the tax to help with those raises. So we get a little bit raising at each time, and so, uh, Mike and I have been working together on the roof for the police department, the fire department, that was one of the things when we went to the voters that we said that we would work on is the roof. And then there's some other projects we're doing around the police department, uh, updating some equipment, as you see with our patrol cars, um, we was able to update a lot of equipment and all those that came out of the tax.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, so there are some people that are realizing that you get money from the general fund and you have to subtax, and this is gonna be a lot of communication conversations concerning the fact that you have an empty, uh, police officer, that comes from the fund, right? It can't come from the improvement.
Yes, sir, can.
Well, I know, but he's chosen not to.
So the general.
There's also that two dispatches.
Right.
The general fund pays our salaries, and then whenever we pass the tax and we gave our, gave raises to be more competitive, the tax takes care of that portion of it. So every, my salary, all the police officer dispatcher salaries comes out of general fund. But the raise portion that we did a couple of years ago to be competitive, that, that sliver at the top comes out of the tax.
Right, okay, and improvements, capital improvements?
Well, yeah, this year I didn't ask for any capital improvements through the general fund, so what we do, the tax, yeah, so the roof will come out of the tax.
Right, okay, yeah, but there needs to be a clarity on that, so that's why I appreciate you asking.
Well, banking.
The ongoing, uh, lease payment on vehicles continues to come out of general fund. We were able to utilize tax, the tax fund to help outfit those vehicles, but the core payment of those vehicles comes from general fund, just like it would any other vehicle, say, for public works or, um, community development, that all comes out of the general fund too, so. Just to clarify that.
So in other words, to me, I'm putting a very simple, um, term, it's icing on the cake.
It's helping us do a lot of things that we weren't able to do over the past year, safety concerns of the police department, we're gonna be able to do a few things, um, that we weren't able to do over the past years through that tax.
Right, there were times you had to, you put something on the budget and then it would have to be gone off because you really wanted it, needed it, but we couldn't get it for you.
Yeah.
I've heard of that a lot.
So if you wanted to keep the other officer, you're gonna have to come up with roughly fifty-five thousand dollars from somewhere else in the general fund.
To, for what's that?
If you wanted to keep that officer that's on the freeze, you have to come up with roughly fifty-five thousand, if I'm understanding correctly, from somewhere else in the general fund.
I'm glad you asked that question because that was the summary we were gonna, gonna come up with, and that is, this has been, they're working very, very hard to figure out how to do that. You know, we had five, uh, five vacancies citywide, and, uh, we ended up with two that we put on delay hiring to try and balance the general fund. One of the reasons I'd ask Zach to go through the electric, water, and sewer is because there is another aspect of that, and that is, as you increase the rate on that, you also increase the overhead allocation which comes back to the general fund. Zach, could you address that for us?
Yeah, since we'll be bringing in, if, if we were to do the rate increases we talked about for the, the utilities, that additional, you know, five hundred thousand, that six hundred thousand dollars, that generates an additional thirty-three thousand dollars for the general fund through grocery receipts.
So, what I was gonna ask the council to consider then is, I had said that we're balanced with more than one percent. Now, that's just me, you could make a difference if you wanted, I, I was comfortable with that, and councils have been comfortable with it in the past, but we're at a negative, uh, thirty-eight right now. One percent is fifty-four, okay, if we went up from thirty-eight to fifty-four, okay, that gives us a, a few more dollars. If we take the money that, uh, uh, and it puts us about thirty-four thousand dollars off.
And also the, the increase to solid waste would be the same thing, you go from nineteen to twelve, so you add another eight thousand dollars there.
So what we.
Where?
If you, if you increase the revenue on the solid waste, then you're increased the gross sales, the grocery receipts, five percent tax.
That was what I missed.
Yeah, so, yeah, so you get eight thousand dollars from solid waste.
Into the general fund.
Bottom line, everything gets filed right back into some city service.
Yep.
So if we add that back to the, to the general fund, and I, I, and I know it seemed. So if we add that back to the, to the general fund, and I, and I know it seemed like it's a, a little bit of moving money around, but if that comes back to the general fund, that, all of that brings us back up to, to what I have is about fifty-four thousand, which is one percent. So I think we could, if the council would like to consider that, we could use those, uh, those allocations back from the, uh, utilities revenue back to the general fund, and we, it raises our, our negative up to, to about fifty-four thousand, and that's one percent. And I'd call it balanced.
But that's if we leave the budget the way it is.
Yeah, that's one way of doing it. And now we've talked about other things that you can move around, but what we're trying to do is build that at least one position back in, and that's one way to do it. So, yeah, and this, we're not asked for a decision tonight. We're just giving you all the information. You can think all of this over and, you know, call us, call any of the departments you want to talk to during the week, talk to about it, and next Monday we'll come back again and see what you'd like to do.
Well, there's a couple of things that I thought of this week was, one of them was council salaries. It's basically ten thousand dollars, if I'm understanding, a year. We're doing hiring freezes all the way through the city. That may be something that we could consider getting rid of. Second thing was the ten thousand or eight thousand we spend on the retreat every year. To me, I think we can find a way to do that in-house here. I mean, I'd rather do that than lose an officer.
Another council suggested maybe we don't have to do that every year. We could do that every other year or so. If we do, if we do these, they're supposed to be two to five years. Okay, well, maybe you can let them ride for, for another year.
Well, I think it was twelve to eighteen months to get the goals done, but we, it seems to me like that we always end those goals at twelve months and then have another council retreat, and we're not even done with some of the goals from the first twelve months.
We did have a discussion about that, and, you know, my, my take on that was the first two years we did the council retreat, we had very immediate, very, uh, objective goals that we could, and then after that, it, it turned into more of a wish list of three to five years instead of twelve to eighteen. So we did talk about, you know, maybe we don't need to do that every year, and maybe we just need to do it when it seems appropriate.
I mean, I understand that kind of trying to get council focused, so the staff can be focused in a direction.
Yeah, it's kind of what Shelley was saying. Like, first year we said, okay, one of the goals is to have a salary survey. Okay, we did a salary survey. Now we have goals that said, become more user friendly. Okay, we're working on that, you know, and we keep working on that, but it's not, not something that you, you kind of can, can do in a week and then check the block and say it's done, so they.
But something like that, I think, could you would have come up with it if you tried to do it with the employees and the council together. I mean, I think that's one of those goals that I, I would have hoped that you would have come to no matter what.
Well, there, there are things that, uh, we do need to address probably every year on what are the most important for the next year. Some of that definitely could be done in-house, definitely, but then have, uh, like every two or three years, have somebody kind of keep us not like so much like cats, because we kind of be like cats, we're kind of like cats.
Hurting cats.
Yeah.
Well, councils change, change a bit, so some, some method clarifying where are we going, what do we want, given the manager, the staff.
Correct.
Uh, something, I mean, forty percent of your council can change in a year, and a lot of the goals could change in that year.
Right.
So something, whether it's in-house or.
And, and, and I'm, I'm only saying that because, like I said, right there could be twenty thousand dollars between those two things, and if it gets to, you know, the council two years from now, a year from now, like, we don't like this, we don't think this is positive, maybe we need to do that again. So be it. Find the money to do it again.
Yeah, and wh- wh- when I first got here, we had not done a, a strategic goal session for a long time, and then Mayor said, do one this year. Okay, so we got that started, and, and now we, we've continued it because we do it every year. That doesn't necessarily mean that the reasons we did it the first year have continued on for all this period of time, and maybe the way can do something different.
Well, and we also now have a vision, which was probably what we should have started with, because the vision doesn't usually change. It's your.
We did that. They gave, got us a number this year, but we, we've worked on it at a retreat before.
Well, I just remember when that one lady asked about a vision, and we, nobody could tell her what the vision was.
Because we didn't have it in front of us. If you look at the last, last year's retreat, uh, at Excelsior Springs, we spent quite a bit of time on that. I remember that. I knew what.
Yeah, we did, we did, we redid the statement.
Yep.
I don't know if it's a vision statement or something else. We had a mission statement.
Mission statement. Okay, but a mission statement is different than a vision.
That's true.
Okay, you have a, your vision is at the very top, and then you have a mission statement, and then you have strategic goals, and then you have objectives. That's how it works.
And I'm not saying.
We had a mission statement.
I'm not saying everything's bad by any stretch of the imagination. I'm just saying I'd rather talk it out in the basement or a community building to save an officer. I know it doesn't save the whole officer, but.
But you're getting there.
Well, I'm going to blow everything up. Just thought I'd let you know. I've already let you know this. Because my priority is retaining staff. And I don't think you can do that if you take money away from them every year. I think that you put a salary schedule in place, and I think it needs to be adhered to, every single year. And I say that because I've been on a salary schedule that has been frozen, and you never get that back, ever. So that's my priority.
We have a, we have a, in this budget, we built in a one, one percent raise, but we also have the step increase, so when you average that out uh, for everybody, I've asked what that averages out to be. So year in and year out, it's about three percent.
Okay, I'm going to remind you something you said last year. You took a one per, because normally it's whatever it is and two percent. And last year, they took the one percent, one percent of it away, okay, and you said, I'll never do that again, and yet here we are. And it's going to, it, in the long run, it's going to take a lot more money to give all that back than if we do it right now. Right now, we're only one year behind. We're going to be two years behind if we leave it in place now.
And, and that would be to go to what increase?
Whatever you normally give them.
Well, what have we, Carmen, what have we done over the past?
Because you have, because you have across steps and you have down steps. And then you have the one up here in the corner that whenever you change it, changes all the across steps and all the down steps, am I right? So it, we break it out into a cost of living allowance and then the merit notorious. So basically, we took one percent away from a cost of living allowance last year, and we're going to do it again this year, is that right? In, in a very, in a good world, we would like to do two and two. Uh, the notorious step would be variant between one and a half and three, depending on where you're at on the scale. But no, in a perfect world of perfect revenue, perfect expenses, it'd be probably about a four percent. Well, let me tell you what the cost of living was last year. It was five point nine percent, and it, it is uh, being debated that this year's going to be close to ten.
Yep.
So, every time you don't give them that, you move them backwards in salary.
Here you are, sure.
That's my priority. Now, that may not be anybody else's on the council, but that is my priority because one of the things that we talked about at the retreat was retaining staff, not hiring new staff, retaining staff.
There were four green dots. One of us didn't.
Well, one, one percent increase in salary for the city is four thousand dollars, uh, forty, forty thousand.
That's what you told me last year.
About forty thousand dollars. So, you know, you want to give a one percent more increase, you find forty thousand dollars somewhere else. Two percent.
Take it out of the streets.
Just.
That's just my priority. I'm just letting you know what my priority is. I told you I was going to blow it up.
We.
I am.
All of the employees appreciate that.
I'm sure they do, but again, I've been in that situation, and I'm, and you never get it back. If you don't, if you take it from them, you never get it back.
So if you can't compensate with the raise, can you do it another way?
I don't know. I'm just telling you what my priority is.
Just a thought. I know a few doctors, they don't take any kind of raise, doesn't matter what kind of year they have, they, they had more weeks off.
That's doctors.
I'm just saying, that was one more time off. But if you can't afford it, if you can't afford it.
But.
You're still.
No, you, you're right, and, and that's how we have to approach a lot of things, because we will never compete with a co-op or an investor own. We, yeah, we have to find other things that make it attractive for somebody to come work here, because we're not going to make it on, on pay.
Right.
But.
Whether it's a pool pass or.
But.
Back to weeks off.
But on, on, to be honest with you though, if we're not close, then we don't even get consented. We can't even make the case of, hey, look at the oven we provided, because we're like, I'm not coming for that. So, yes, yes to both.
I would say we have a very generous time off policy, and as the, with, with me just having staff that are one person, be, be very difficult for me without having, being able to replace the summer intern I have, have my staff take another week off and try to cover those positions.
You're still.
It's, it's been a struggle this summer now.
Right, I just know if there's, if, if there's absolutely no way I can buy a car.
I don't want the same points I'm on. I don't want to make you the work.
Well, earl- earlier today, we heard Zach comment about institutional knowledge. Had a, had a line break, hundreds of thousands of gallons of loss, and the three people there combined didn't have a year's experience, so. There is some cost savings. Institutional knowledge is, is very valuable at least.
And, and I'll, yes, we do have three good employees now, and I, I don't, I don't fault them at all. We, we, I said, we've got some good guys. And we, we now have some couple of good young guys that are, that are showing some interest and stuff.
And where the shut-off valves are now.
You know, we're, you know, we're learning those things. But at the same time, I want to be able to keep them. Like, you know, the retention side is also, is equally scary to us, because they are showing some interest, that they kind of, they're like, I want to be able to keep them. How long are they going to stick around for fifteen bucks an hour, working on Sunday afternoon? They're, they're not going to.
Okay.
And especially if you take money away from them every year.
Right.
So where would you propose some of it before you put that on?
I, I haven't figured that out yet, but.
I mean, is there anybody against that?
Against it?
The idea of, of having a, or adding the second percent?
And I'm including that police officer. I don't think that would really be a police officer. And we've already left the two dispatchers on.
Right.
Okay, so I'm including that.
So it might cost a little more.
So we're, we're up to a hundred thousand dollars on a general fund.
Wow.
Right?
Would be if you did those two things, yes.
Well, I.
Well, but you still have to remember your increase in grocery receipts that will be coming back to general fund.
But the, but, but the forty thousand dollar increase for the additional one percent, that's not all, that's not all general fund.
No, that is not all general fund.
Ve- very small portion of employee salaries come out of general fund.
Well.
Or I mean, I mean, are funded solely from the general fund.
Funded sole, I would say probably.
I think Tad and Gray and, well, when I went to do pay park and Ricks.
Yeah, that's a good portion of my staff. Spend their days doing utility bills and billing and whatever. A good portion of their money comes from utilities, their salaries.
Part, part of that increase that you're talking about, uh, can we? Part of that increase could come from utilities.
Right.
Credit in general fund.
Right.
Well, I understand that, but I really don't want to increase the utility. I'm interested in that.
But that's what you, if you have to build that into the increase of the utilities, how much is it? Is it another fifty cents on top of that six dollars, five dollars?
If we're going to increase it to utilities anyway.
I mean, the, the bottom line is, there's no fluff in here. We're talking about an extra officer. Nobody's against that. We're talking about trying to hire retain. Nobody's against that. We're talking about keeping our systems up, water, sewer. It's, it's, it's like going to the gas company. It, it's costing what it's costing, I don't like it either. So. I, I.
I mean, there's some capital improvement money at the community building. I guess you could try to figure out how to pay that with something else.
Well, if we got ARPA, then we could put some money in there.
There you go, more ARPA.
No, we're talking now. Talking about the same ARPA that we had a minute ago.
But it would be worth, we would be interested in figuring out how we can do the staff's recommendations on how to do those things.
So, so, yeah, so let's, let's. I think what the guys were getting is see if we can add one percent and the police officer, and we'll see what funds it out on.
That's not what you're getting from me. I want two percent back on here. I don't want them to have lost anything.
You have two, we have one percent. You were going to make it three or make it two?
Make it two. I want to give them their one from last year.
Yeah, we have, we have a one in built into it now, so we add another one into it. That takes another forty-nine.
You took, you, you don't have one, no, that's, no, that's not what I'm saying. You're twisting that, okay? You have one percent built into it right now.
We have one percent.
You're going to add one more percent.
Right.
That's two percent. That doesn't count last year. Give them another percent. That's what I'm saying.
So you're saying go to three percent?
Well, if that's what it is, then that's what it is.
So.
I mean, I don't look at it that way. I look at it as one percent from last year and one percent from this year, so I guess it's three percent altogether, but.
So it takes eighty thousand.
You already, you already have one percent built in. Why are, why are you counting it as three?
What I'm saying, if you, we have one percent built in, if you would like to add another two percent, that would make it a total of three, which would take eighty thousand more. Right. And then fifty thousand more for a police officer.
I do think we ought to try and move reports to the county. I think we ought to do that. So whatever you have to do.
Well, I think you're going to give us an analysis on what that would save us, with regard to environmental.
Yeah, but I still think it would be a good idea. I think it's something that we just do, and maybe it would be better done, or, you know, wouldn't cause us as much of a headache if we moved it someplace else, having knows we have enough headaches.
At a, at a glance, it seems like a good idea.
Well.
Look forward to the analysis.
How long would, how long will it take to get an analysis done?
Oh, we, we'll do that this week. We'll have it for you by the end of the week.
Oh.
They didn't give me a twenty thousand dollar analysis. And, and I'm going to look at two things. I'm going to look at finding ninety thousand, which is one percent in a police officer, and a hundred and thirty thousand, which is two percent in a police officer. I'll see what it looks like. Do the best we can.
And there were several other things, the, the salt basin, other things. You want to work the analysis on and tell us if it makes sense or not. Okay.
Okay, we'll bring that all back to you. Five o'clock next week before the council meeting.
Thank you.
We're talking about, what if you bond certain things or not bond, aren't we at the end of our bonding?
We are in, for this calendar year, for this calendar year, we have maxed out our tax exempt status of bonding. So that means, being a municipality, you get kind of a special treatment, and we have to cap our borrowing at ten million dollars. So January one, we can start planning future bondings at, at that tax exempt status at that time.
Okay.
So then we make a, we draw it off somewhere.
That should be.
Yeah, but there's, you know, there's debate whether you, you know, you take part of the, should make this money, bond certain things, but, I mean, we can full plan that in this off-season.
Right, we have.
We really can't do anything.
Next six months to plan that, get updated engineering numbers, and you can focus and get a goal as to which projects you want to do. There isn't a, you know, it needs to be done. We need to get on to getting those numbers together, because I don't know how current our current information is, but yes, we got time to plan that and do that in the next calendar year.
Uh, and I believe from beginning, if we wanted to waive our salaries, we'd have to make an ordinance to say that.
I didn't know if it was state law or if it's just local ordinance.
I think the state law allows it. We adopted an ordinance many years ago. I think the state law allows it, we adopted an ordinance many years ago that started with this base amount and has cost of living increases. So it's, it's, it's morphed into what you guys are hearing now.
Right. I mean, if it means getting increases for these guys.
When, when you, you quoted the code earlier, was it two thousand and eight? Do you remember? I'm thinking it, it was, it was, that they started that.
But, when you write it, you have the ability to waive that, and if it's just me, I'll waive it, if I need an ordinance, I'm not a problem with that. Because I appreciate the staff and what they've had to, I'm sure there's a lot of ulcers going on the past few weeks, and those will continue.
Thank you very much, Carmen.
Thank you, Carmen.
That sounded like most of it.
Most of it, very.
Yeah, that probably won't work, no. Thank you. I don't, I don't know why, I, I don't know. Okay. Yeah.
Well, there's some tough issues.
Well, that was enjoyable. Yeah, Zach, you were the, yeah, Zach, you were the big hero tonight.
And what is it like being out here learning a high school system? It can't be easy, I mean, what's it like for you guys?
It feels pretty good.
It feels good.
It was good.
I like it.
Lots to take, but-
Yeah, definitely a lot more.
Not that hard.
And Carter, you were playing a lot of quarterback today, uh, once again, quick decisions, quick cuts, a lot of throwing off your back foot sometimes when you're throwing the opposite side there. What was it like, uh, being such a part of this offense, almost the, uh, the cog in the wheel, they say?
I, sorry, it, it feels good, you know, it's a lot more fun to pass, throw to, throw to receivers, get more yards. It's definitely a lot more hard, though, to throw on the run.
And what's it like for you playing running back, of course, you guys are running everywhere, every play, it seems kind of like an endurance trial a little bit, but, uh, what's it like handling the running back situation with this new offense?
Basically, don't drop the football, run, score touchdowns.
Absolutely, and as a lineman, you know, you just wanna be aggressive and the running game lets you do that, uh, what's this camp been like for you so far?
Well, um, I've been learning a lot of plays, it's been fun, um, not that hard, I believe that I'm having a lot of fun.
And, uh, being that, uh, you know, this is the same playbook that you're learning at the high school level, uh, how much confidence does that give you knowing that, hey, once I get up to that, that spot, I'm, I know what's going on just right off the bat?
It's just like taking a shortcut.
Yeah.
Really? And we can kind of elaborate on that a little bit.
It's like taking a, it's like a, all you hear about when you're in middle school is like, oh, it's going hard at the high school level, but like, when they have little camps like this, it's like, it's like taking a shortcut, just getting it down. So when you come there, you're like, okay, I know this, I know that, I know that.
Absolutely, and, uh, one more question for all three of you guys, what is it like working with the high school boys?
It's a lot of fun, you know, most of them, they're all very nice.
You get to learn a lot more stuff.
Maybe if you, they're fun, it's a great time, all around.
Absolutely, well, no, that's all I got, hey, I appreciate you guys, thank you.